All right. Good morning, everyone. I'm Cynthia Toles, President of the Gadsden City Council, and we're meeting today by teleconference. Today's council meeting is being broadcast on Facebook Live and also can be viewed later on Comcast Channel 99, AT&amp;T U-verse, and the City of Gadsden YouTube. This meeting of the Gadsden City Council is called to order. The Chair calls on City Clerk Alvin Nelson for the roll call. Councilwoman Toles?
Here.
Councilwoman Williams?
Here.
Councilwoman Worthy?
Here.
Councilman Back?
Here.
Councilman Wilson?
Here.
Councilman Cannon?
Here.
And Councilman Reed?
Here.
We have a quorum present, and the meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Councilman Cannon to lead the invocation.
Bow our heads, please. I'm a special seven to five, but we'll be thanking for day that you've given us, God. Thank you, Lord, for the weather you've given us, God. But thank you, Lord, for always being with us and watch over and taking care of us, God. We ask for what you'll be with this meeting today, Lord. Have your will in this meeting today, God, and just be with us and watch over us, God. Thank you for everybody that's watching today, God, on the Facebook Live or wherever they are, just watching, listening to us, God. I thank you for them, God, and I just worship you and I praise you for it. For your name and for your sake, I pray. Amen.
Amen.
At this time, I'd like to begin our meeting with an update from the Emergency Management Agency, Deborah Gaither, the Director.
Good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes. Good morning.
Well, we will go ahead and get started with our COVID update. Today, January the 5th, we have added more deaths. We're at 96 now, and we have several critical patients in our hospitals right now that we certainly hope they improve, get better, recover. But I do hate to report that we're nearing the triple digits in deaths on this pandemic that we're dealing with right now. As of today, from yesterday, we have 101 new cases added. There are 11 of those that are probable. So that means, you know, we just have under 100 that are new cases. We did surpass our 10,000 count moving into total number of cases. So that's another goal that we did not want to reach, that we did. We also are on a 14-day testings. We have tested 2,536. The Edwah County Health Department and several health departments are still doing COVID testing. That hasn't been a big topic lately, and a lot of people will say, "I don't know where to go for testing." But the same locations that were opened are Edwah County Health Department and several doctors' offices that we'd called out before in these meetings are opened and doing testing. Also, we are, we've experienced a 52.29% test positive rate over the last 14 days. So what that means is, I had asked Chief Carroll if he could give us a field report, but he had another meeting this morning. And so he and I had an in-depth conversation yesterday and this morning talking about how we're moving forward. One comment he made was, in March, people were much more respectful of first responders, of healthcare providers, of those that took care of individuals. And that doesn't seem to be happening now. He said they go many places on response, and, you know, no one's wearing a mask, no one's trying to social distance. This is still our Thanksgiving response. We haven't touched our Christmas response or our New Year's response as of yet. We're still responding at a rapidly high rate and a deadly rate to Thanksgiving get-togethers. We like probably another two to three weeks before we start responding to Christmas, and then we'll have another round a week later or so when we start responding to those who were exposed and contracted it over New Year's. So all together, we're looking at, at the least, the next six to eight weeks being very, very hard in Edwah County for some of our fellow citizens. He wanted me to remind everyone that if you're under a doctor's care, call your doctor's office first before calling for transport to a hospital unless you feel it's a life-threatening situation. Each time that someone is transported, there's a holdup then there at our hospitals because our hospitals are full. They're doing the best that they can, all our healthcare providers are. So we need to find a way for citizens to depend more on their regular physician instead of going to our emergency rooms unless it's a life-threatening situation. So we need to get back to that. I know it's scary if you have COVID, but talk to your doctor if you have to multiple times a day. A lot of them can teledoc with you now, so you can do that from your phone. So we encourage people to do that. Let's see, we also talked about, now that the vaccines are beginning to slowly roll in, it seems like people are banking a lot on vaccines. Don't bank a lot. Let me give you a number. In Alabama, we have 4.9 million citizens. COVID vaccines that were distributed in the past two weeks We got a very minimal, minimal supply of that 226,000. The majority of those go to the larger metro areas. We're now considered a small sub-metro. So we did not get a large number. One of our hospitals is still yet to receive their vaccines. You know, we are opened up for our first responders and healthcare last week on their first round, healthcare providers on their first round last week for their first vaccine. Thursday, the big topic is, we're having a vaccine in Edwah County at the venue. And I want to read something to you if I can get to it. That drive-through is a COVID-19 vaccine drive-through that we're focusing mainly on our first responders, our healthcare providers, and our citizens 75 or older. There are a lot of subcategories in there. But, you know, I'm going to tell you, we do not have enough vaccines for all of our first responders, our healthcare providers, our citizens that are over 75. We're not trying to discourage anyone from coming. I'm just saying, we don't have the number of vaccines that people think that we have for some reason. Those numbers just aren't coming in at that. Now, we expect that to pick up. The local health department is doing the best they can. They've requested the numbers that we need, but we're only getting what we're getting. People are looking at the list and saying, okay, who are those that we should be working with? I sent that list out, and it's pretty, pretty much explained well in the newspaper today, the Gadsden Times today. It gave bullet points for Phase 1A and Phase 1B. One question was, well, teachers are in there. Well, teachers are in there, but what we are asking is to let our first responders and healthcare providers, our citizens over 75, to go first. If you are a teacher that has a comorbidity, yes, come. Try to go ahead and get yours now. If you're a school nurse, please come. If you're a school support staff, let's wait as long as three to four weeks. That's all we're asking, three to four weeks, for teachers who are healthy or school support staff who are healthy. Then we'll have another round. We're going to continue to schedule these. We're going to continue to work hard and get these set up as quickly as we can. The, you know, the main thing is, even though we're provided a minimal amount, we do not have enough for everyone that seems to be wanting the vaccine right now. There's no need to continue to call the health department, no need to continue to call the venue, please. The venue, they're only providing the location for the health department and the EMA that supports them to work with everyone to have a vaccine lineup drive-through. So no need to call them. They don't have the answers. The best thing to do is, if you have a specific question, email us at ema@cityofgadsden, and while answering you to the best of our ability, we'll work with our local health department to find answers for you as to what you might need to know. So please, calling, we're short-staffed right now, and just give us the option of looking at your email and answering it slowly and appropriately, please. We'll do it if it takes us, you know, till late at night to get your answers. Does anybody have any questions?
You basically answered the one. I got a call about the teachers. And they got an email from their nurse saying it was like it was open for Edwah County. So I think that needs to really be cleared up. Our email needs to go to the school system specifically, let them know who and what, because I think it was a general email that says Edwah County, so that meant anybody could come that were teachers.
Right. I did talk with Mary Gomillion this morning, who's our Northeast Healthcare District Representative, and she and I are going to try to have a conference call tomorrow with Dr. Reddick, Dr. Cosby, and Mr. Colgrove. So all the school systems will be involved in that. Some of our private schools, we're going to try to call separately today and speak with them. We just, we don't have enough in our round for teachers. For teachers in general. So we, we're just asking those that have comorbidities or weakened immune systems to please come. And the others, we're working as quickly as possible to get what we need to get everybody vaccinated. But if we don't have our healthcare providers and our first responders vaccinated and ready to roll to take care of us, then we are going to be in trouble. So just ask everybody to be patient with us. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Any comments, questions from the council?
Deborah, do you have, do you have any updates you can offer relative to available hospital beds at each of the two hospitals?
We still show that we're at a critical limit for critical care patients. There has been an extended wait time per our EMS providers across the county, and some have had to wait for transport to other locations hours, which also ties up our EMS providers because they have to stay with that patient until they're either accepted into the hospital or they find another hospital to transport them to. I know over the weekend, there was a time that the hospitals were full, and the nearest hospital was Atlanta that had an opening, and it only had like two beds. So it's not just us, it's across the state of Alabama. It's in our region that the hospitals are struggling and trying to get people the care that they need. So, and that was the latest update I have. Now, of course, tomorrow, I hope that both hospitals can join our elected officials from across the county on our phone conference call tomorrow, and they can give you a specific update.
How long would it be before the pharmacies, you think, might get their vaccinations to give?
And I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you, Councilman.
How long do you think it might be before the pharmacies or the drugstores get their vaccinations to give out? Are we a long way from that right now?
No, I don't think we're a long way. There are a couple of pharmacies within Edwah County that have received their allotment, and they are giving it to healthcare providers. So, you know, we've worked with two different pharmacies that are helping to support us by giving it to healthcare providers. So I don't think it's going to be that long. I just think the rollout is so slow. And I'll be honest with you, the locals were not included in on the federal and state planning efforts for this rollout. So we didn't have that much input. Are we making excuses? No. Your health department, your first responders, your EMA, we're doing everything we can to speed it up.
Deborah, can I ask you one thing?
Yes, sir.
On this coming Thursday, the number of first responders as opposed to the amount of vaccine they have, do we have enough to even cover them if they all came?
After last week, yes, we do, with a very small amount left over. Yes, we do.
You know why I'm asking, because over age 75, the numbers that'll be coming as opposed to the amount of vaccine possible. Okay.
Right. And I've encouraged our first responders to come between the hours of 7:00 and 9:00 a.m., and we've asked everyone else if they'll wait till after 9:00 a.m. We don't exactly, you know, what we'll have left. So every group that I've talked to, I've asked them to wait after 9:00 a.m. Let our first responders and healthcare providers come between 7:00 and 9:00.
That's good. That's the other thing I was going to ask. That's great. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Gaither.
Thank you.
We will continue with our agenda. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session and council meeting that was held December 29.
So moved.
So moved.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Councilwoman Toles?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Councilwoman Worthy?
Yes.
Councilman Back?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Cannon?
Yes.
And Councilman Reed?
Yes.
Motion carries to approve minutes.
The Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payments of accounts for the week of December 25th through the 31st.
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Councilman Reed?
Yes.
Councilman Cannon?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Back?
Yes.
Councilman Worthy?
Yes.
Councilman Williams?
Yes.
And Councilwoman Toles?
Yes.
Motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
I'm not sure if the mayor's on or not, but I'm asking if there's any proclamation. Having none, we'll move to unfinished business. We have a resolution that ordering abatement of nuisance on property at 1224 Malone Street in District 3. This resolution was tabled for 30 days on December 1st, but it is the pleasure of the council.
I'll move to abate the nuisance.
Second.
We have a second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Councilwoman Toles?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Councilman Worthy?
Yes.
Councilman Back?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Cannon?
Yes.
And Councilman Reed?
Yes.
Motion carries to adopt.
The next resolution that we're having, that we're ordering abatement, and I'd like to know if Mr. Harberson is on the line.
I don't see him listed, Dr. Toles.
Okay. Well, we have this resolution on the property at 721 Bear Avenue in District 5, and this resolution was tabled for 30 days. But what has happened, is it an injunction?
Yes. The Circuit Court has filed an injunction against the city, so we just need to table this indefinitely until that injunction period expires, and then we can revisit it. So I make a motion that we table this indefinitely.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Councilman Reed?
Yes.
Councilman Cannon?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Back?
Yes.
Councilman Worthy?
Yes.
Councilman Williams?
Yes.
And Councilwoman Toles?
Yes.
Motion carries to table the resolution indefinitely.
New business? Department reports? Remarks by the council. We'll start with District 7.
Okay. All I have is to give a big shout-out, and I thank it to all the city employees that have been hanging in there and continue to for the work that you're doing and everything you've been confronted with. I was in the library yesterday, and I promised them I would give them a salute. They're hanging in there too, as well as all employees, and thank you much.
Councilman Cannon?
Thank you, Madam President. I'd just like to say I wish everybody would try to wear their masks so we can get through with this COVID. It's real. And I just hope and pray that everybody stay safe and try to wear their masks. And just, how about just trying to pray for each other? Pray for the people that are sick with COVID, the people that's in the hospital, the doctors, the nurses. Just say a prayer every night for those kind of people and see if we can't maybe kind of help them a little bit in that way. That's all I have.
Councilman Wilson?
Yeah, I want to, first of all, extend my condolences to the Hightower family. Just a couple of weeks ago, we were on here wishing Ms. Joan Hightower a happy retirement, and unfortunately, she passed away last week. And that's a terrible loss. I've known the Hightower family for a long time, and Ms. Joan was a big part of my life as a young entrepreneur and a young philanthropist in this community. And she taught me a lot about what it meant to care about the place that you live. And she'll be sorely missed. So my heart goes out to her family. The only other thing I'll add is, last week, I saw somebody texting me and ask, "What are you guys doing when y'all approve the accounts payable?" You know, how do y'all oversee that? So just to give everybody a little insight into that process, we get a report every week that shows all of the expenditures of the revenue department, anything from buying mops and brooms to clean up the, you know, parks and wreck, you know, divisions and all kinds of stuff. Parts for the dump trucks and the trash and garbage trucks, and tires for the police cars, and anything you can think of is on there. And it is itemized out. It tells us what, any expenditures over, I think, $3,000. We get a little note that says, "Hey, this is what it's for," and that's what we use to approve those expenditures. So I just wanted a little teaching moment for those who would ask. That's all I have.
Councilman Back?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I want to echo Councilman Wilson's remarks about Joan Hightower. What a wonderful lady Joan was, and what a great contributor to our city and county Joan was for many years. She has left a void that cannot be filled, and I just pray for her family, for her husband George, and for their entire family. It's a great loss for them, obviously, but it's a great loss for our city and our area. I had the pleasure of going to Nakalula Falls for Christmas at the Falls, and it was absolutely beautiful. So a big thank you to Jen Weddington and Christina and all the people at the Falls that have worked, I believe, since August to make that happen and to pull that together. There's, according to our train driver, there's over a million lights, and it is just really spectacular. It's one of Gadsden's brightest lights that we have throughout the Christmas season and really throughout the year. And, you know, there's also so many people that volunteer at Nakalula Falls year-round to help with the trails and the bike trails and just all sorts of things. And it's great to see the community come together to really rally behind probably one of our best assets other than the Cousteau River would be Nakalula Falls. So a big thank you to all those folks. And just want to echo also what Deborah Gaither had said. We just need to be safe. This is, this is still an ongoing pandemic. And regardless of what you read, I mean, I remarked this morning to my wife as I was reading the Gadsden Times obituary column every day, I'm seeing two and three people that I know personally that have passed away with COVID. And typically, when I read the obituary column, that might happen once a week. And now it's happening on a daily basis. So this is a very real occurrence. And I just pray that we're all safe and that we're all doing the right things to protect one another throughout this pandemic. We still have months to go, and it's a long race. And I know we're all tired. I'm certainly tired and don't like the prospects of the next few months. But I think we need to double down and to rededicate ourselves to doing the right things and just being careful and just being safe. Thank you.
Councilman Worthy?
Yes, Madam President. First of all, I'd like to say thank you to all our city employees, our first responders, and all of the city workers, especially the one that's working in the building department. I'm going to just, I'm going to leave it at that right there. They know who I'm talking about. But I want to also announce that we will not have a Martin Luther King Day prayer breakfast this year because of the coronavirus. I don't want to add to the problem. Numbers are going up daily. Deaths are going up. So people need to adhere to the social distance and wear masks. And along that note, I want to really see if there's any one on from the administration, because I'm getting calls from people that would like to have graveside services, and they are not allowed to have a graveside service. But yet, still, we're letting people go to the Falls, and we've written out different, I know, 210 at the tracks and the downtown civic center to people. So I'm trying to see why are we doing that? And we won't let people have the graveside services in their outside with masks on and doing social distancing. I know two families had to go to different cemeteries other than the cities here recently. Just about the third or fourth time I've gotten a call and I'm spoken with the mayor about it before, but it didn't go anywhere. So we need to look at that, if it's all possible, because we may be adding to the problem if we don't close some of these facilities down. So let me see if I have anything else. I believe that'll do it. Thank you.
Councilman William?
Madam President, I don't have anything.
Okay. And I don't have anything, so I call for a motion to adjourn. Oh, yes, I do. We will be teleconferences really until we can get a really handle on this COVID-19. We will continue to teleconference our Zoom meetings unless there's something that comes up that requires us to meet in person. So just want the other council members to know that we will be teleconferencing until further notice. And that way, the Facebook Live and the people on Channel 99 and everywhere else will know that we're doing teleconferences unless there is some business that will come up that would need our in-person handling. So if nothing else, I call for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So moved.
Meeting is adjourned. Meeting is adjourned.